Okay. My name is Jan Fried and I'm Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission and I'm going to raise the rules here. The Planning and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will, in public hearing, take a final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision plots unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the City Clerk or Community Development Department staff at 515-689-9485 for details on council hearings. The applicant will be given 10 minutes to reden the request. If applicants wish to share material not already submitted with the application, please email them to planning@dm.gov.org so that staff posts may be able to share them on the screen when you reden. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Staff has attempted to compile a list of people who would like to speak on each item. Staff will first call on these people and then will open it up to anyone else who wishes to speak. To request this speech during the meeting, please use the raise hands function on Zoom, via Internet, or dial *9 on your phone. You will be required to give your name and address for the recording prior to speaking. Also, we ask that you keep your microphones and phones on mute unless you've been given the chance to address the comments by the chair. The applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal if any opponent spoke. All comments are to be conveyed to the eye under consideration and speakers are to make it as courteous manner. The hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendations staff reports unless an individual presents or member of the commission. Request that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines, please provide accommodations for individuals with disability and free participation in the city government. Please know that typical accommodations may be limited by emergency requirements as issued by the State of Iowa and the City of Des Moines. Tyler, do we have a forum?
Uh, we do.
You don't?
Let me take roll call real quick.
Oh, yes. Roll call, please.
Greg Jones?
Yeah.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
Greg Wadier? Francis Bogus? Carolyn Jensen? I see them on here, but we'll go forward. Lisa Howard? Steve Wallace?
Here.
Jackie Easley?
Here.
Jan Fried?
Here.
Dory Brials?
Here.
Emily Webb?
Here.
Jack Helmas? Will Page?
Here.
Rocky Spazato?
Here.
Francis Bogus, you with us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Carolyn Jensen? I see Carolyn on here.
Alright.
There she is.
Yes, now can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, sorry. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Um, we have, uh, some minutes from the last meeting. Does someone want to make a motion or are there any changes or?
I move. So move. This is Jackie.
Thanks Jackie. Okay, um, Tyler?
Uh, Rocky Spazato? Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Brials?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Jackie Easley?
Yes.
Lisa Howard? Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yeah.
I do see Greg Wadier has joined us. Lisa Howard?
Abstained.
Greg Wadier, you with us?
Yes.
Move approval of the six June 4th minutes?
Yes, approved.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you Tyler.
Motion to approve the minutes passes thirteen zero one, or excuse me, twelve zero one.
Okay, thank you. Item number one, request from Bedouin Company represented by Bowd Barry to review and to review, for review and approval of a site plan, Little Caesars requiring the following type two design alternatives in accordance with chapter 135, section 135-9.2.4B, as in voice, and 135-9.3.1B for property located at 3727 Southeast 14th Street to allow development of a restaurant within a 6,000 square foot storefront type building. Um, Jason?
Yes, members of the commission, Jason Van Essen with the city's planning staff. Uh, just give me a second here and I'll go ahead and, uh, switch the screen to my, uh, presentation. You should be seeing a aerial identifying the subject property. It's on the east side of Southeast 14th Street, uh, south of the intersection with Indianola Avenue. Frontage Road, you can see some of the development around it, uh, residential area to the east. This is a photograph of the kind of northern edge, or actually you can see most of the property here in the, in the building to the south and, uh, at the edge of the left-hand side of the picture would be the north end. Uh, the frontage road view, this is kind of southern end looking back, uh, towards the north. And then, uh, that, uh, would be the northwest corner looking back over the site to the south and to the east. Go ahead and walk us through the site plan. Uh, just, uh, demolition, existing conditions. Um, you can see it's a four-tenant bay building proposed, uh, kind of surface parking around the, under the building drive to the north. Uh, dumpster enclosure southwest, excuse me, southeast corner of the site. You can see, you can tell, uh, from looking at the aerial, you notice that the property extends further to the east and part of that's residentially zoned. All the commercial part of the site would be within the more the western part of the site, the commercially zoned part. This, uh, shows grading and stormwater detention. Stormwater detention is allowed to, um, extend onto the residentially zoned part of the site. So that's that little leg off the backside, but you can see that the commercial development, um, are towards the west. I'm just going to flip through these until we get to the architecture. Let me know if there's any questions on the site plan that you want to stop and look at. I guess I will pause here for a second. Uh, this is the landscaping plan. Uh, you can see the, the different, um, plant material that's required, including the buffering plantings are required along the residential, uh, lots, um, to the southwest, excuse me, southeast, my bad. Photometric plan, lighting levels. Now moving into the architectural sheets, uh, roof plan showing the rooftop mechanical within a, a screening system. The, this is labeled as south elevation, but this is actually would be the west elevation facing towards the frontage road, uh, facing towards Southeast 14th Street, the four bays. Um, I believe right now there's just one tenant that, uh, has been identified and I, I'm, my understanding, but I could be wrong, is that they're, they would be on the, the left bay. Rear facade, which would be facing towards the east. Um, I'll jump back to what they're asking relief of when we get a little further into it, but a lot of that darker material that you're seeing is, um, metal and that's part of the relief. On the backside, not the front, those are brick columns. So, um, the, on the, uh, like I said, let me take a step back. You know, with our new, uh, ordinance, new zoning code and new, uh, planning and design ordinance, uh, site plans are administrative process unless there's something, a standard that, uh, cannot be approved by staff, that isn't being met, a variation or a design alternative. So what the focus of the planning zoning commissions reviewed tonight is really the four items that you see is A, B, C, and D. Uh, the, the site in general, developing it commercially, it's zoned appropriately. Uh, a lot of the, you know, there's adequate parking, stormwater, all those things. Um, so really our focus is, uh, these items, which is the placement of the building, this is a storefront building. Uh, the code requires to be within zero to five feet of the front property line, which in this case, the front property line, uh, is actually along 14th Street. So it's on the opposite side of the frontage road. So, um, you can see with the, with having a frontage road on private property, it does make it impractical to comply with that standard. Uh, the next is a storefront building in the zoning district would, would not allow to have parking in front of the building and they're proposing a good share of their parking take place, uh, between the building and the frontage road. So that's something that the commission would have to approve in order for it to place. The second, um, or excuse me, part C, it has to do with access drives. Chapter 135 would limit a site like this to one access drive with their layout. They are proposing two off the frontage road. And then last is the metal material on the building, um, alluded to that when I was showing you the elevations, that, um, they're, they're, um, proposing a higher or, uh, more of that material than it's allowed and they're also showing it going down to grade. Uh, in the staff report, we include all the criteria for offering up type two design alternatives. I won't go through that, I just wanted to point out that the commission had that, um, at their disposal to review. So, as staff, we recognize that there are, there are some things here that, um, we can get behind supporting type two relief for. It's not our, our recommendation, and I'll go ahead and read through the conditions of approval, don't match up with what exactly, you know, precisely what they're proposing, uh, but we do think there is, um, a need for some type two relief. So we are recommending approval subject to the building being placed in close proximity to the frontage road. Uh, this can be done whether it's, uh, in two different fashions. One would be, um, placing the building so it's oriented towards the south, kind of like the tire, um, shop to the north, and I have an image that I'll show you. Uh, so the building would, the storefronts would face south and the, or the parking would all take place to the south. So the building would sit more in the, would be the northwest corner of the site. Uh, another alternative would be to place the building close to the, keep it oriented the way it is, but pull it up towards the frontage road, but allow some, um, parallel parking between the building and the frontage road. So treating the frontage road, uh, like, uh, a street with on-street parking. And that's what condition number one is getting at. Um, it just goes in, talks a little bit about, you know, if the parallel parking could be constructed between the building if it's oriented that way. Um, and then there's some discussion about, um, orient the building in the other direction and, and not having parking extend further west in the building. Number two is review and approval of the finalized building placement and parking layout by the planning administrator. Uh, we would work with them if, if this, um, these conditions were adopted for that, you know, let them look at those two options. Maybe there's a third option that we could support that we hadn't thought of, uh, and sort that out. Uh, number three is provision of masonry or concrete siding for the bottom two feet of the sides and rear facade. Um, that, uh, we can, we're supportive of, uh, the metal material, um, exceeding the 60% uh, standard. Uh, so they're proposing a higher amount of metal siding. Uh, we're supportive of that, but we, we, uh, believe that there needs to be a durable material in that bottom two feet. So that's what condition three gets at. Four is the provision of a pedestrian route from the building to Southeast 14th Street sidewalk, uh, satisfactory by the planning administrator. Uh, their site plan currently doesn't provide for pedestrian connection to the public sidewalk along Southeast 14th Street. Uh, we believe that that's, we recognize there's some grade things to take care of, but we believe it's achievable and should be provided. Five is removal of an unused drive approach to Southeast 14th Street. This is, and restoring to the right way, that's a standard condition that you see on site plans a lot, just cleaning up the site. Um, and then six is revision of the site plan and building elevations to comply with all administrative review comment. That's just standard language that we'd, we'd offer on anything that comes before you. This is a graphic that was provided by the applicant to show development around them and to show how their building sits. Um, you know, it, it is their preference to, you know, we're here tonight because, um, you know, they need relief and, and we're offering up something slightly different than them. They, they still are wishing to move forward with the project as proposed. Uh, and with regard to the building placement, I'll let them go into kind of the detail of why. Um, it centers around grading and, um, you know, this is the, probably the most efficient way or the least amount of grading, uh, to develop the site. Uh, we don't, um, dispute that, um, you know, doing it, arranging the site in the fashion that, um, we're proposing would have more grading to it, uh, but we think it's worth, worth the effort to try to achieve, uh, what we're trying, um, to achieve with the new standards. And I think if you look at the development to the north, you'll see, uh, that that worked on this site. Now building frames the frontage road as if it was a street. And then even as you work further north, you can see how those buildings are uptight as well. Um, there is, this building is set back a little bit to the south. It's still not set as far back as what they're proposing. And then QT to, uh, even further south, it would be fairly in line with it. So, I'm just wanting to show you this graphic and we can circle back to this if, uh, the applicant would like to, um, have you look at it again. We sent out notice cards to everybody within 250 feet. Um, we have been contacted by a couple of neighbors on Southeast 15th Street, uh, via email, um, but, um, we did not receive anything in writing, um, so there's no responses shown on the map. With that, I'd be happy to answer your questions you had for staff.
Jason, this is Jackie. What, what was, what did the neighbors contact you about?
Um, let me go back to... This neighbor here has an easement that their driveway actually is on the applicant's property and they were concerned that the development would impact that. Uh, so I did provide them a copy of the site plan and we were able to, um, resolve that, that they are showing that driveway stays in place. Uh, I think they also had some questions about stormwater. I did put them in touch with, um, with the applicant's engineer. Um, so they've been corresponding directly. I think he's resolved their questions. And then we were also contacted, I, I believe it, is this property owner about a desire to, um, make sure there's fencing and buffering. Um, they asked about an eight-foot tall fence. Uh, our code only requires a six-foot tall fence along with landscaping buffering. Um, that's a minimum. Um, I believe, you know, there is some space in the area that eight feet could be provided without any sort of relief, um, but, um, that's not a standard that we would normally apply.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Jason? From the commission? Okay, is the applicant online? State your name and address, please.
Yeah, good evening. Uh, my name is Caleb Smith. I'm with McClure and, uh, we're at 1360 Northwest 121st and Clive. Um, I just want to say first of all, thank you very much to staff. Uh, staff has, uh, been very good at, uh, helping us kind of work through this project. Um, as Jason highlighted in the first part of his presentation, the site is not the easiest site to develop from a commercial perspective. Um, just for perspective, there's about 10 feet of fall from kind of where the parking lot is shown in our, in our plan down to Southeast 14th and it happens in a very quick, uh, quick transition. Um, because of these grades that we are fighting on site, obviously we can't push too much further to Southeast 14th. We have to maintain the frontage road and as you can see from the areas before, the frontage road has quite a bit of grade off of it. Um, one of the things to keep in mind is that frontage roads grades run about seven to eight percent. Um, and that also kind of complicates the ability to develop this property effectively. Um, and looking through, uh, staff's comments, um, first thing I always like to do is say, okay, what are the items that we know is no big issue for us to, to agree to? So, um, we, in, in discussions with everybody, items three, five, and six are things that, yep, there's absolutely no issue from us to get that taken care of, so we're good with that. Um, number four, the pedestrian access from Southeast 14th, regardless of how the building gets oriented, it's not always going to be somewhat of an issue. Um, when you start looking at ADA routes, um, up to a site like this, you're going to be very cognizant about turn movements and crosswalk of these walkways. The problem we are going to fight about getting, uh, accessible route from the sidewalk up to the site is that frontage road's grade. Apparently, like I said, it's about seven, eight percent across that slope. And while ADA codes would allow you to have a mid-block crossing in those locations with those kinds of slopes, I, I just feel as a matter of, of good conscience, it's hard for me to say that's an accessible route if you know there's an eight percent cross slope in those walks. And that's why we at this point in time have not shown a route from our site to the sidewalk. The owners would love to have it. It only increases the viability of this, this building for both, uh, Little Caesar's franchise as well as the other tenants that will occupy the building. Um, but at this point in time, the reason we have not done is because of our concerns with that cross slope in the frontage road. Um, so that leaves us down to the last issue and that last issue is kind of orientation of this building and, um, its proximity, uh, towards or away from the frontage road. Jason did a good job talking about kind of what's happening both north and south of here and obviously the sites to the north have been more recently developed. And, um, we have looked at that, that suggestion from staff and the problem that it creates for us on this site is that this is a multi-tenant building. Uh, both those buildings to the north were single users. So they have frontage still on Southeast 14th and it's, there's no other tenants that would then be in and behind it. Um, by rotating the building the way staff has suggested, um, Little Caesar's could still maintain great visibility, but any other tenant that would take up the remainder of the space would not have any. And that's very problematic when you're trying to rent out, uh, buildings like this. Um, and so we, we had looked at a concept like that very early in the process and several different ideas and we ultimately settled on the, the proposal that's in front of you for a couple of reasons. One, the grade is a huge issue. Um, two, the visibility along Southeast 14th for all the tenants would be vastly improved in this location. Um, and then number three, the way, the reason we have the parking lot in front is we actually have used that in our design to kind of help transition some of that elevation grade, um, from the frontage road up to the site. Uh, by moving the building any closer, it just further compounds the ability to transition that grade appropriately. Um, I know one of the comments here was about, um, having a second access drive from the site. Uh, I think we would be very agreeable to looking at removing the north drive from our plan as we have it. That would get us back to, um, taking one of those, uh, issues off the table. But I think at this point in time, given the nature of the train on the site, um, how the buildings are oriented to the south similarly, um, we feel like this property and its very unique nature, um, is warranted to have some special considerations and we think this plan is the best, best plan altogether, uh, for this property. Um, I don't have anything else I'd add to that. Uh, certainly be happy to answer any questions or comments.
Okay, questions from Mr. Smith? Does anyone have any questions?
I apologize. This is Tracy Lukasak. This is my very first time, um, actually participating in a public hearing and I don't know if this is the right, if I can actually ask a question.
Um...
No, right, you're supposed to wait for the, sorry, this is Jason Van Essen with the planning staff.
Okay.
Members of the public will have their opportunity after the applicant's done.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Thank you.
It's okay.
Okay, uh, I'm not hearing any questions and I'm not seeing any hands, I don't think. So, um, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Raise your hand or *9 on your phone. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Okay, not hearing any. Um, is there anyone who would like to speak who has concerns about this proposal? Either speak in opposition or has concerns. This might be the time for you to speak. Tracy?
Well, thank you. I'm sorry. Um, so I am next to Bruce, um, so I'm the second house.
Hey, Tracy, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, for the purposes of our, of the hearing and record, we need you to, uh, just provide your full name and, uh...
Oh, sure.
An address, please.
Very, thank you. Uh, Tracy Lukasak. I live at 3804 Southeast 15th Street. Um, so it's the, I'd be the second house here that's right next to, would be next to the, um, the new one. Yep. One more. Yep, that one right there, yes. So my question is, um, actually I have several. Um, is the, the spot here in the back of the, of the addition here, is that where the dumpster is?
It would sit right here.
Yeah, so my, and I understand that, but my fear would be that, um, people would throw either outside of it, over it. It would end up in Bruce's yard. It would end up all out over everywhere. Um, that's just a, that, and that's just a piddly concern. I understand that. I do have a concern about the drain. Um, the way this is set up right now, and I understand Andy talked to someone earlier and I need to talk to Andy. I've been working all day. Um, this road, because we're at a dead end, um, we don't get treated by the city and so if anything comes down this road, it's just an ice skating rink. Um, so I do want to make sure that there is no drain issues, if you will, um, for us because that is, that isn't a concern that I have. And then I do just want to confirm, there will be no, no road then coming back down through Southeast 15th Street. There will be no exit road coming through there.
Somebody say that's correct.
Okay, so Tracy, we'll let the applicant respond when, um, do you have any other concern?
When I'm done, I'm sorry, yeah. The only other thing I was going to point out, um, because I wasn't sure how far back the back parking lot was going to go, is there's no view to that from the street. So, that's my only concern. Um, Southeast 14th is a very busy street. I hear it all day. Um, there... I hear it all day. It's a little bit concerning to me from a, just from a crime perspective, perhaps maybe, that with no visual from the street, that there wouldn't be anybody, there could be, there could be potentially some undesirable activity going on back there, that there wouldn't be anybody to police.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm done now. I'm so sorry.
Okay, no, it's okay. Questions for the, for Ms. Lukasak?
Yeah, Lukasak, you got it perfectly.
Um, questions from the commission? Okay, thank you. So, will the applicant, Mr. Smith, do you want to address her concerns?
Yeah. First of all, the concern about the drainage is something that we were very careful of when we first started planning on this site. Right now, a portion of the Discount Tire site does drain through this property that we're, we're having the proposal on tonight, and drains out to their street. As part of our proposal, we have decided it probably makes the best sense to try and capture those flows and cycle it through our detention basin. What the value of this is, is one, now we don't have two storm outlets going to the street, it would all be one, and it also kind of helps continue to control it further beyond just what the Discount Tire folks have done. Our, our models and calculations have been sent to engineering staff for review, and we've worked back and forth with them to make sure we came up with the best possible plan for everybody downstream. End of the day, I'm pretty confident, assuming everything gets built, as we have shown, that it will actually improve the conditions down the street. Now, within regards to the icing, if, if, I can't speak to that, but it should not be any worse, although what we're doing is not going to stop it from happening, it will continue to happen, and there is a portion of the site that currently does drain to that street. Hopefully, it's maybe just a little bit less quantity if our system works as designed. You are correct, there is no connection from this site to your road, so we actually, as you can see here in the drawing, have a big detention basin in the way, so it would be highly unlikely anything would ever be connected back there, so you will still be able to maintain your dead end. And as far as crime to the rear of the building, I think it'll be treated just like any other quality retail building, and there's typically some level of security system around there. We've got a good, good occupant on the north side that's gonna want to make sure that, you know, their parking lots is being well monitored so that people want to come in and buy pizzas. We don't have any ideas on other tenants yet, but again, we, we want to try to create this as a high-upstanding location, and paying attention to those kind of issues is critical to making that happen. I, I don't know what else to say, this is what happens with development, is that some of these things can become potential, but I think we've got good owners here who are gonna try and do the right thing and make sure that that doesn't
Okay. Thank you. I just, I, we just moved here almost four years ago, and what sold us on the house was quiet, dead-end road, you know, so, small neighborhood, everyone knows each other, looks out for each other, so I appreciate the time and, and the answers, so thank you very much.
Chair, this is Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. I'm not seeing any other people raising their hands to speak, unless there is, I guess there is 51524, I'm sorry, 5154239724. Has their hand raised?
Yes.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, you can speak.
This is Andy Ogden, 3801 Southeast 15th Street. I just wanted to raise a concern again about the water issue, because right now, when it pours down that ditch that they dug a few years back, the water gets as much as six inches deep flowing down 15th Street, plus I'd like to know whether the empty lot that's gonna be in front of us, whether to plan on any kind of usage for that. I mean, any venue, you know, since it's an empty lot, if there'll be anything in there, would they be using it for any kind of events or anything, since it's an empty lot?
This is Caleb Smith again. What we've got planned here is the extent of what we're showing the building, to build. So, the open area that is behind the parking lot's actually where all those tree stands are, so while in this drawing, it looks like a big open area, our intent is to keep the tree stand that's there. And then in the very rear of the lot will almost likely forever be open space unless the site gets completely redeveloped, because that's where our stormwater control basin is. And the landscape, landscaping plan is part of this packet, we have pretty significant landscaping in that area to kind of help shield and buffer from those kinds, these kinds of uses, but likely very little activity will ever happen in this area, given these kind of conditions that we're, this shows it better. And you can kind of see there where the existing tree stand is as well, obviously where that drainage away from Discount Tire's been cut through, but other than that, we're trying to maintain everything else in place.
I just wanted to make sure they weren't gonna use it for any kind of parties or anything, because it's open space, you know?
Not intended this time.
That's my concern to Des Moines.
Chair, this is Michael Ludwig again, planning administrator. I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
I think we've lost our chair.
Oh, sorry.
We are gonna put the retention
Okay, so, time to close the public hearing, time for discussion from the commission. How's the commission?
Depends on how deep they build that detention basin, because sometimes they plug up. You ever see that retention basin down there where that?
What, come and go, or?
Okay, this is Michael Ludwig, planning administrator for the City of Des Moines. We have maintenance requirements on detention basins that the applicant will have to, have to comply with, and so the hearing has been closed, and now the discussion is open only to the Plan and Zoning Commission members.
Thanks, Mike.
This is Will Page. I'd like Mr. Smith to explain once again the problem that, that he has with orienting the building to the frontage road. He explained the first one very well, but the second one, I didn't quite catch on why he found that possibility to be unacceptable.
Mr. Page, just so I make sure I understand, the, we discussed what staff had recommended, are you asking to move the building straight west and swap it, so to speak, with the parking lot out in front as we have shown?
I thought that was a possibility that the city had suggested.
The suggestion by the city was to kind of locate it similar to what Discount Tire was to the north, actually turns the building so that the fronts would be facing south, and then pushes that building as close to that frontage road as we can get with the grades we have to deal with. Under that scenario, it'd be very difficult for all the tenants to get the visibility that we need ultimately to make this a viable building. If the question is, is do we move that forward up as close to that frontage road as we can, assuming the grades work? I think that's possible, but I think if we did that, the problem we're gonna have is that we really can't have a frontal building facing west in that situation. It, it, just because coming out into that frontage road with that kind of grade is gonna be very, very difficult to build something that's viable for pedestrians trying to get to the front of the building. If we did that, we'd have to have some help in allowing the rear of the building to be to the west, and the fronts of the building, so to speak, on the east side. We could work on the elevations to the rear to make them a little bit more street appealing, but if we did that, I think that could be a possibility if, if P&amp;Z would prefer to see something that way.
Yeah, thank you for explaining that.
Jan, this is Greg Jones.
Yes?
To expand on Will's question and, and the answer, so, it's possible to move the building somewhat to the west, all the way to the west, if we allow some, something on the rear of the building to make it look like a front, is that what I heard?
Yes, sir, that's, that's, that would be possible. One of the, I know we're trying to get the building within five feet of the right-of-way or in this situation, the frontage road, i- it's gonna be very, very difficult to do that just with the grade we've got and the grade of that, of that frontage road, so we would need at least some level of relief on how close to that we could get. But if we could work, if, if it could be agreeable to have the back of the building be facing the street with appropriate elevation work done to make it look a little more like a front, and still have the front, the doors to the, to the tenants on the east side, that could be something that could work. I can't promise you we'd be 15 feet from the frontage road in a way that would place the building, but we could certainly get it closer than it is now.
Jan, would it be, this is Jason Van Assen, do you, would it be okay if I just clarified a couple, a thing or two that I glossed over, maybe my staff report?
Yes, please.
I, I just, for Caleb's sake, I want to clarify that in our staff report, the way we wrote it, there, there's two options, and I know I probably talked a little bit more, and I, I know my initial correspondence with you, I was talking more about the kind of duplicating this orientation to the north, but we also, in the staff report, discussed sliding the building forward and then having on-street parking, which would probably be right here, if I, if you guys can see the hand on the screen, and the building would slide over wherever it needed to sit. Of course, that, that's with the thought that the building, this front of the building is still facing the street. So, what I'm hearing you say is that if you did that, you, there would be some, there would be some challenges to having pedestrian or having entrances oriented that way. I'm, I'm just, I wasn't quite following what you said on why the building would have to flip orientation so that the fronts really face towards the east.
And I apologize, I misunderstood, and I do remember having discussions about that piece. You know, part of the problem we have is that frontage road's grade being at eight percent. If you try and orient commercial building along that kind of frontage, every single unit's gonna have to have a step, and honestly, from an ADA and the client's perspective, as tight as that would be, it would be exceedingly difficult, in my opinion, to build something that would allow folks to be able to get in and out of the buildings appropriately. The parallel parking along the frontage road was a, was a great alternative solution here as well, to help get some parking up front, but the, the actual constructability of this building in that situation would be very difficult, because if we slide it forward, even if we stepped the buildings to match the frontage road to the back, is a big flat area, and we'd have massive amounts of earth we'd have to cut out and haul away, it would just make the project completely unviable from a financial perspective, and that's why we've decided to push it back to get everything level in the, in the proposal we have in front of you tonight.
Caleb, and Chair, Jan, I hope, thanks for your patience as I interject here. What about, I, as staff, I'm a little concerned about flipping the building and having maybe some token windows that are always dark on the backside facing the street. What about a single-loaded driveway, you know, getting that building closer to the street, and then you have, have a single-loaded, maybe one-way angled parking, whether it's, you know, head in this way or head in, you know, this way, but at least getting the building up so it's a little more in line with, you know, the building here, or maybe even a little closer if possible. Is that something that could work? Caleb?
Oh, sorry, yeah, from my perspective, I think that's something we could make work. I think we, in this situation, we'd probably move some of the parking in the front and move it to the rear, and we would just slide the building forward that 18 feet, and like you said, would get you much more in line with the building to the south, and from a constructability perspective, I think it keeps us very similarly priced for the project.
Thank you.
Chair, this is Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. Obviously, on, on other commercial frontages, we do have buildings that have entrances on the front and the back sides of these buildings. Prime example, although the grade is not as substantial, the, there's a four-tenant building on Ingersoll just passed MLT to the satisfaction of the planning administrator. Item number two is struck in its entirety. Item number three stays as staff has written. Item number four, I believe they should provide, and that should stay as staff has written. Item number, I'm sorry, item four. Item number five and number six also stay as staff has written.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
Greg, I have a question. Why are you getting rid of the number two? Because I added it to number one when I said slide the building closer to Southeast 14th to the satisfaction of the planning administrator.
This is Will Page with a question, please, for Greg. Excuse me, when you say sliding the building, you haven't said if it's going to face to the south or to face to the west. Was that intentional or was that unintended?
I think between the applicant's desire to face the street where their customers are coming from and the planning staff and administrator approving it, my guess is that's where they'll end up, so I wasn't trying to over-design it.
So, you're not saying for the orientation of the building, one way or the other, you're leaving that up for the planning staff to decide with the client?
You are correct, because just like what Mike pointed out on Ingersoll, it's literally a two-sided building with arguably two fronts, and whether the applicant wants to go that direction when they slide it to the west, or whether they want to leave it predominantly a front-facing, I, I can go either way.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion. Any other comments on the motion? Okay, Tyler?
Abby Chunga?
Yes.
Rocky Spazada?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Brow?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Jackie, easily? Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogdan?
Yes.
Greg Wadia?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Jackie? So, without Jackie, motion for item number one passes 12-0.
Okay, thanks, Tyler. We're on item number We're on item number two. Request from C-Green Contractor, represented by Christopher Green for review and approval. Review and approval of the site plan, C-Green Contractor Storage Edition, requiring the following type-two design alternatives in accordance with chapter 135, sections 135-9.2.4B and 135-9.3.1B to allow construction of 1,250 square foot warehouse addition to the 3,521 square foot workshop warehouse-type building in an EX mixed-use district. Catherine?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Catherine Dostart, planner for the city of Des Moines. The subject property is located on George Flag Parkway, just to the south of the Des Moines Water Works Building, which you can see on the map here. As mentioned, they are looking to build an addition onto the north facade of their existing warehouse building. I'll zoom in just a little bit. And so their existing building is located here on their property and they're looking to add an addition on approximately here, if you can see that highlight. Back out. A little bit of context for you. The, this is from the west edge of the subject property on George Flag and I'll be heading east through these photos. You can see this is a pretty industrial area. They do have their fence in front of their storage yard and then open parking up to the George Flag Parkway Road. That just gives you a little bit of view as it exists this week. They did provide us with some drawings with their application and I'll zoom in on that just so you can see a little bit better what they are proposing. So George Flag up here at the north, they're looking at adding some striping, I believe. Not too many changes right in that front area, kind of updating their parking within their enclosed yard. And then again, this is their, I've just highlighted the portion of the existing building and then the proposed addition should now be highlighted. I will note that our considerations are due to the fact that they are asking for relief from having a entrance on the, what would be the new primary frontage facade. So staff by code would like to see a primary entrance up in this area. And then we would also by code like to see that this new addition area would be the office portion of the building. The applicant is proposing a storage use in that area. A little too far out there. Here's some, pardon me, some facade elevations that they have given us. Generally, they've met all of our other code requirements. This would be the primary street facade where my arrow is facing George Flag, that's what that would look like. And then you can see the eastern facade. They also have a doorway and some new windows they're proposing. My apologies. And then this would be the western facade. As staff, we are recommending denial of the appeals just because by code, we are looking for that primary entrance feature along the street-facing facade of the addition. And then we are looking for that office space usage in that new addition closest to the street facade. The applicant did provide some drawings that I will be helping him share a little bit later during his presentation that they've updated this week. I think they've made a few changes that they'd like to highlight to the commission. If the commission, my apologies. And then we also have the consent map. As you can see, we didn't receive any comments back. If I can answer any questions for the commission, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Questions for Catherine?
Oh, Catherine, this is, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Will, Will Page here, Catherine. I have just a real quick question. In terms of the building materials on the north elevation, do those materials meet the code requirements?
Yes, we did not have concerns with the, with the materials. They'll be matching the existing and generally with a pre-existing structure building situation. Most of the time when they match what's existing, we're willing to work with them on that. So as you can see, it looks like they are planning on using a CMU block, which is what is existing. And then they did meet requirements for shadow lines and then transparency within the transparency zone on this street-facing facade.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Catherine?
Hi Catherine, this is Greg Wadié. Can you walk me through, I mean, the property has a, a, a storage, out, outside storage lot in front of this building. And so I guess I struggle with what good it would do to put a primary entrance on that, I guess I'll call it north facade, when there's still the truck area and it's all behind their yard fence. I, I, I don't know. I thoroughly understand the intent of primary entrances and walkability to streets. I thoroughly understand that. But that wouldn't happen because the reality is there's still the fenced area with a fence.
I see what you're saying. Yep, that is a bit of a conundrum with this, this particular project. But as staff, we're, we're looking to uphold the, the standards that have been set into the, the zoning ordinance as best we can. And we find that the best way to do that is through incremental improvements, asking for the necessary elements, design elements to achieve that.
I didn't see in the staff report, and I was just trying to look it up, the existing building and existing sites, sections. Did, did you go through those with the applicant? I, I did not have time to fall back and study those.
All right. There were different discussions. Another staff member was the primary reviewer on this project. But generally, they, what they have proposed has met the intent of the code with the exception of these two elements. And so they were just, the applicant I know was looking for relief to those two. And they'll be better suited to explain their rationale behind that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any, any other questions. So is the applicant online? Please state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Josh Palmer. I'm the architect and I will be representing them today. I'm at 662 40th Street in Des Moines, Iowa.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so this is for C-Green Construction, just a little bit about them first. They're a 30-year-old business and they've been here 14 years. The building has been approximately used in this current condition for roughly 60 years. And they have 16 employees and they're looking to just expand and continue their business, doing a lot of asphalt and concrete work throughout the city, especially in the building core. Which is one of the reasons we're looking to expand the building and, excuse me. We thought we can meet a lot more of the zoning by putting this on the front of the building because we get closer to the street. We, the building up with the, kind of the shadow lines which we mentioned. And we had since, we were not against putting a door on the front. It didn't seem really practical, but there's nothing against it and we're totally willing to comply with that if that's what's required from the city. Our problem though is in making that an occupiable space. Currently, we are shooting to make this a $50,000 addition. The assessed cost of the building itself is 103,300. So the moment we go over 51,000 and change, we trigger a lot of additional requirements by the zoning code. And if we make this an occupied space, it triggers also I B C requirements, which then we have to insulate the building and put a mechanical unit to provide heat and air to this space, which then blows our budget way above that max, that amount, which would make us, end up triggering, once we get all the way through, a site upgrade to almost the entire site. And we've gone through some preliminary estimates of that because I can do that on-site, C-Green Construction can. And from the stormwater drainage to ripping everything up, it was around $360,000 additional to do that for the site, which just became on top of the building construction. So taking this from a $50,000 project to roughly 400, over $400,000 project, which I know that's not necessarily always the concern of the zoning board, but it's definitely a concern here for us and for the intent of the building owner. And so that's why we're looking for relief in order to, to meet. From the outside of the building, we believe we're meeting all the requirements that it'll look, the it'll look and conform to all of those standards that we have for the windows heights. And if need be, the front door, it just will not have somebody necessarily behind those windows all the time. So I thank you very much for your time.
Questions for Mr. Palmer? From the commission? Okay, is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the applicant? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition or express concerns? Okay, I'm not seeing any. It's time to close the public hearing. Okay, time for discussion from the commission.
Jan, this is Greg Jones.
Yeah, Greg.
Since they're okay with moving the door to the north side, I think we should do that. And since what they're proposing has windows in it and it looks like an office, whether or not inside is an office or not, I'm not sure that I think we should really care. And so I think we should allow them to use it for storage if they move the door over there and then we've kind of accomplished what we want to accomplish.
Thank you, Greg. I was kind of thinking the same thing in terms of, you know, they're willing to move the door. It does look like an office and, you know, stay within the cross, their cross budget. Other comments? Someone want to make a motion, please?
Jan, I will.
Greg?
I think we should approve the site plan if they move the door to the north and get rid of provision P, which says that they need to put an office on that north end.
Okay, we have a motion. Any, okay, so we have a motion. Tyler?
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Brow?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Jackie Easley?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Wadié?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
And Abby Chunga?
Yes.
Motion for item two passes 13-0.
Thanks Tyler. That's the end of the public hearing items. Is there a director's report, Mike? Maybe I need to close. Close the.
Chair, this is Michael Ludwig. Just wanted to let you know, we don't know for sure what format next, the next meeting on July 2nd will be. The governor's proclamation allowing the electronic meetings technically ends on June 25th. And so we don't know if that'll be extended or not. So just be looking at your packets for information on whether or not we're on an electronic meeting or a combination or in-person meeting on July 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Meetings adjourned.